Olson.
Present.
Steven Ramirez. Conrad Bane. Jim Pumker.
Present.
So may I pause for a second?
Yes.
So, um, I did receive emails from all four of the people that are absent.
And DG will not be here.
DG will not be here.
Dale will be late.
Dale will be late if he gets here at all.
Conrad.
Conrad will not be here.
And Steven.
Yeah, so, but, but they did give us a notice, so we want to.
Excuse those that are absent. Let's go ahead and excuse those that are absent. Do we have?
No, we only need four of them. We only have seven voting numbers.
Okay.
And then we have two adjuncts.
Okay. So that motion to excuse DG, Dale, Conrad, and Steven.
My second.
My favor.
I.
Those. So those that showed that those folks will be excused. Looks like we still have the same. Yeah.
That is, uh, that is stated.
Okay, it's okay. I just wanted to make sure you got. You just don't have an email. Good, yes. Uh, does anybody have any comments on last month's May eleventh meeting minutes? Oh. We can go through the agenda. Let's go through the agenda. Well, first we'll go through the minutes. Ratification for those personal services. I think we've done all the public hearings. Everything's done except predication by us now. So that we can send it on to the, to the council. Uh, workshops with RV mini stories. We have homework assignment to come back more prepared. Or with more information on what we think we should be doing there. Uh, amendments to the zoning map. Amendments to the comp plan maps and amendments to the parking standards. Those are things we're going to work on. Maybe get into our reports. Any citizens comments? We don't have any citizens present right now. Are there any citizens online? I don't have visual of that, do I?
You do not have visual of that.
Okay, just let me know if somebody does go on if you see that. So now let's move right into the comments on last month's meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. No discussion? All in favor of approving last month's meeting minutes?
Aye.
Aye. Close. So the last month's meeting minutes are approved. Now get into the ratification process. We've gone through all the criteria for approvals. Maybe if you have the basics, I don't recall ratification justice.
So the.
This is pretty much a briefing, right?
Yes, so, so the reason.
Do I have to review it again? Go through it again?
So this is, this becomes, um, this is, this is the written decision that goes to city council. So all of it is the same as the staff report instead of getting into findings, criteria for approval, uh, conclusions that you made and recommendations and this one's.
And this was exactly the way it was when we talked about it last month. It did not change.
I believe that's the question before you. Is it inconsistent with what you, with this body?
Does it? While we can go through this, let's just go through the findings, then the approval and the conclusions and recommendations. We'll have a one read if there's any comments or questions. Uh, just stop me and I will, we will try to see, see if we have to do anything different than what is written here. The findings are required. Separate seep review has been completed on the proposed amendment. Two, the public and agency notice requirements were met and accomplished in a timely manner. Three, the public was provided the opportunity to for referring and continuous participation. Four, the public had the opportunity to submit written comments and testify at public hearings before the planning commission. Which we had then, and those no public input on our. Uh, during the public hearings. Criteria for approval. Uh, the city may amend the development regulations, but by any of the following that applies. That such amendment is consistent with comp plan is not, and is not determined detrimental. And is not detrimental to the public welfare. Change in economic, technological, or land use conditions have occurred to warrant modifications. It is found that the amendment is necessary to correct an error. It is found that amendment is necessary to clarify meaning or intent. It is found that amendment is necessary to provide for uses that was not previously addressed. Or amendments as being necessary to read city councils, we in public interest. And when, when we looked at those, we came to the conclusions. Uh, for our planning commission, number one, the proposed amendment is consistent with our comp plan and is not detrimental to the public welfare. And that was a unanimous conclusion. Number two, the proposed amendment is warranted by change in economic, technological, and/or land use conditions. And that was an anonymous conclusion. The proposed amendment is not necessary to correct an error, and that was an anonymous, an anonymous conclusion. Number four, the proposed amendment is not necessary to clarify meaning or intent, and that was an anonymous conclusion. The proposed amendment is necessary to provide for, for a proposed use which was not previously addressed. That was an anonymous too. So that was. Then number six is a proposed amendment is being necessary as being of public interest, and that was an anonymous conclusion. So the recommendation was in the matter of the case number L U A two zero two two dash zero 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 seven. An amendment to the City of Liberty Development Code. Ten, one zero dash two eight dash four and one zero two J dash three. So allow personal care services in light industrial zone as limited use. The City of Liberty Development Commission does hereby recommend city council that that commandment be approved. Any comments? Motion to ratify?
Motion to ratify? Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. There, those are ratified.
So we're going to kick off and first with our workshop on RV mini storage is on use in certain zones. Which we, um, workshop that our last meeting, we're going to just quickly kind of summarize what we talked about last meeting. And then we'll get into some questions. So what we're proposing as potential amendments for, for RV and mini storage. Is to allow them as limited uses in C one, C two, I, and possibly RDC zones. Um, and we'll require that structures must meet architectural design standards. We will require that they be surrounded by type two visual screen, which is not landscaping standards.
It's type one there, but.
Uh, type one, I'm sorry, type one visual screen. Excuse me. You are correct. And what that requires is a six foot high solid fence or wall, a ten foot landscape buffer. And evergreen trees to grow together as a continuous screen in fifteen years for those being inside the fence. Which ensures that the owner then therefore maintains something. And, uh, type two landscape buffer is also required along the street frontage outside of the fence. So, um, we talked a little bit about the history of outdoor vehicle storage in RV parks and mini storage. And they were allowed, now the city didn't, was operating under county zoning regulations until about two thousand and five. Um, in two thousand and five, we adopted, uh, an ordinance that allowed, uh, both outdoor vehicle storage and RV parks and mini storage. All as, uh, as conditional uses from two thousand and five to twenty seventeen. There was a moratorium in the I zone in twenty seventeen for these uses that was ordinance two thirty seven, which eventually expired. Um, but it was, it, the moratorium was until the zoning ordinance could be updated based upon, uh, the recently adopted periodic conference plan update. And, uh, so, um, but the moratorium prohibited recreational vehicle parks and campgrounds, which was kind of the impetus for that. It was the, uh, the, was, uh, on RV park that kind of brought that to fruition. But other uses also were prohibited during this moratorium period of outdoor vehicle storage, self-service storage facilities, identity storage, concrete product manufacturing, ready mix concrete, including extraction and slash mining or heavy industrial type uses. So those changes were permanently incorporated in ordinance two forty one and twenty seventeen, which was the overhaul to the whole zoning ordinance. Um, based upon, again, the periodic conference of by not late. And then we stopped proposing amendment to allow RV storage in the RDM zone in twenty eighteen. That request was denied. So want to point out that again, in our history, we have allowed mini storage. We have several mini storage, um, in different zones. Uh, we have one that's located along, uh, Harvard Road, actually just across from the treatment plant. Uh, that's in M two zone. Not sure why that's M two. It's kind of a little spot at home and. I can't explain that. Um, and the other one is located on Mission Avenue.
Can I just go back? It's allowed in an M two, which is community center. That's a grandfather.
Yeah, yeah. Well, no, no, it wasn't. It, this was grandfather. What I don't know is why that, that particular mini storage is zoned M two. That's the question. It was, it was allowed that actually existed before we incorporated.
Gotcha, yeah.
So it was grandfather regardless, but why do we put that in M two zone? Doesn't make any sense to me.
Agreed.
But, okay.
Okay.
Um, the other, the other mini storage is located on Mission Avenue and it is, um, uh, just to the east of where Kramer Parkway has been fine in Mission Avenue. And it is, uh, to the west of.
Two.
And that's in the C two zone, which makes a little more sense.
Yeah.
Um. So I also wanted to just point out to you, um, some similar types of allowed uses. And, and, and again, we talked a little bit, uh, last time, why or why, why, why we did or didn't think that they were similar. But from a land use perspective, and when you think about a land use perspective, it's like, what are the, what are the, what are the buildings? What is the appearance? What are the types of impacts associated with that? And so we do allow automobile, automobile, manufactured home recreational vehicle, trailer and boat sales. And also rental, um, in C one, C two, and I, uh, not in I, I'm sorry, in C one and C two, not in the I. Um, and also, um, uh, automobile truck repair maintenance in all three. Um, either as a limited use or a permitted use. And when you think about those uses, they have the, by their very definition, they have as accessory uses outdoor vehicle storage. And they, as an accessory use, it's permitted. Um, so that, that, that's one that's kind of curious. Um, it also has a similar, um, they have, also have potentially RVs, boats, trailers on display, generally outdoors, if not necessarily. So it's, so from an appearance standpoint, from an aesthetic standpoint, um, it seems that they're very similar uses. Um, again, boat recreational vehicle, trailer, construction, repair, parts and maintenance. Also, under storage freight and wholesale facilities, we have outdoor vehicle slash RV storage. It's not permitted self-storage, a self-storage facility, mini storage. It's also not permitted. But we do allow for warehouse and freight movement and wholesale distribution centers. And if you think about like, what we're seeing, that it's a very common development pattern right now. Where people do what are small warehouse office types of uses. That they do them at, they do them on spec. You see, Eugene does it quite a bit. And they had multiple buildings like that. Another one is McKenzie Business Park. Has a lot of those businesses. The only difference between those, many of those are only a thousand square feet, um, per unit. The only difference between that type of warehouse and a mini storage is that the warehouse is actually occupied space. So it's a higher construction standard. But in many cases, there's not a lot of difference in size of units, et cetera, certainly not as compared to, uh. Oh, hello. Hi.
For the planning meeting, I'm not driven to write.
This is, this is the planning commission.
All right. I've never been in this room, so.
So. Dale, sir.
Oh, I have no place. Wow, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No worries.
Go ahead and show that Dale, right? Whatever time.
So, so again, I just wanted to point that out, that in fact the impacts to mini storage, uh, facility or, or self-storage may in fact be less than those types of units because they probably, they generate way less traffic. Um, they tend to be, you, you know, they don't have nearly as much generation. It also doesn't have much of a tax base. That, that, that's a fair statement and, um, they are not necessarily a high-end use. But they do, but they, but they're, but it's, um, again, we've seen, um, mini storage in the city of Spokane where they apply architectural design standards and they turned out, all right. Uh, I don't know if anybody's ever noticed, um, the ones that were built in the familiar area where the, the N center used to be. Um, no relation, I'm sure.
Possible.
Oh, okay, fair enough. Um, but.
Long story.
But, uh, my point in all of that is that, um, you can have, you can have higher architectural design standards. Um, and as a limited use, you'd have certainly have the potential to add those. Um, so it, it's just a, a point for consideration, um, as you move forward. So, so it's, that's kind of a recap of what we discussed last time. And some of the reasons why we think that there may be some inconsistencies in our, in our zoning matrix as it relates to those uses. So, but I, I think that to better understand why we should or should not allow certain uses. And I think outdoor vehicle and, and RV storage is one question and mini storage, self-storage is another question. But why we should or should not allow those, we need to understand what the concerns are associated with those uses. And see if there's anything that we can do in terms of adding additional standards to mitigate those. So that's my question to you. Um, I'm, I'm, my ears are wide open. I'd love to hear what your thoughts are. Um, concerns associated with outdoor vehicle storage or mini storage.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, so in, you know, in thinking about the, uh, this is, we're talking about, uh, commercial, three-way commercial community light investment. So those are the types and zones that we're talking about. Uh, so then, you know, I, I'm trying to imagine or think about two things. One is like you were saying, the impact on traffic. And the other being the, uh, as compared to some other use. Okay, and the other would be the, the tax base compared to some other use. Now it seemed to me that both, uh, the outdoor vehicle RV storage and mini storage would have pretty low impact, you know, on traffic. Uh, compared to some other type of business that would go in there. I would think it'd be pretty low impact on traffic. And so from that standpoint, it, you know, it's not a bad thing. But when you look at the, the tax base of the property, I'd also see that that, that's kind of a low tax base. Compared to something else that, that could go into, uh, those designated, uh, properties. And so, uh, you know, and so you try to weigh, you know, traffic impact, tax base impact. And, uh, it would seem to me that without understanding, or without, you know, any particular proposal for some of their other businesses to occupy it. And looking at especially the, the, uh, what's called the freeway commercial. I wouldn't be too concerned about something else going in there on, on the traffic side. I would be more concerned about having the larger tax base going to those tax areas. Just my personal feeling there. And so I would tend to say on the, um, on the, on the zoning that, that's called freeway commercial.
It's just the C two.
Yeah, uh, I would say no to both of those. In theory that we could probably get something that maybe have bigger tax base for the city to go into those areas. Now then, with respect to the, uh, I guess, light industrial and C, uh, C one. I'm sorry, light industrial and, uh, community commercial. Um. I think that's a point of discussion with respect to, uh, you know, if something come in there with a better tax base than RV storage and mini self-storage. I tend to think, yeah, but that may have a negative traffic impact. But when we look at, uh, businesses coming in, how do we analyze or how do we look at or consider traffic impact?
So that's a very good question. So we actually presented the master plan. And we have, we're, we're a relatively small city. We're just under seven square miles. So we have, we, we aggressively plan for transportation. And what we do is we do a, um, a citywide network analysis that is focused on what build-out will look like, what traffic generation will look like in our build-out. And that's easier to do with residential.
Yes.
Um, it's, it's much easier to predict what that is than commercial. But we do use some assumptions as it relates to employment or generations consistent with regional transportation model. We have actually just updated that network analysis back in twenty twenty. And we started in twenty nineteen before, before COVID hit. But, um, and our data was collected before COVID hit. But we did the analysis in twenty twenty and we looked at build-out. What we did in that is we actually took both, what we, we took a five-year, um, what's anticipated to be developed in the next five years. Um, uh, to generate what kind of traffic would look like. We knew that country risk of a lot is going to blow up, and it is. And we also knew that traffic was going to happen in these other areas. We made some, we, because of what we do as staff in terms of people coming, kicking tires, having a sense about what pipeline is. Stuff that we can't always necessarily share, uh, uh, with public, with the public until we have actually a real application. But we have a pretty good sense. And so we, so we actually, I, I actually created a map of what the anticipated uses were going to be, but what we expected in the next five years. And we use that as a basis for predicting the short term. And then for the longer term, we use the SRTC model, um, combined with our land uses. We're very much at the table on the data associated with that. So we look at our build-out and we update this every, I think, we did it in, we started in twenty nineteen, do it about every five years. Because things change, right? And, but, um, and then we look at what is required for transportation improvements for, uh, capacity and operational improvements. And we plan for those, the, 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 um, the transportation improvement projects that we need to do. And we work upon them through, um, our Harvard Road impacts. We use those, so, so we collect them.
Uh, the, uh, impact on traffic with respect to change for the Midway Technology Center, you think that's kind of a, a.
Actually, so the reason.
More or less.
Is going to actually be less.
Be less, okay, okay.
If they, if they develop multiple.
Yeah. Well, then my, my comment would be is, uh, if, if traffic uh, is not that big of a concern with respect to the, the zoning decisions. Then I would say what's going to be the, the best tax base for the city? And I would suggest that, uh, outdoor vehicle RV storage, I would think would be a very, very low tax base for the city. And I, I would think that mini storage and self-storage would also be a fairly low tax base thing for the city. So perhaps it would be better for the city not to have those types of facilities. And we get open for something that has a bigger test, a larger tax base.
That's certainly a consideration.
So. Just a thought.
And then just to jump in, if everyone can make sure you sneak through the microphone, um, just so it picks you up and the microphone is kind of far away for the owl. That way it kind of reads everybody and it's call me soon.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else have comments? So, so I do have some. Uh, I have updated drive out Airway Heights. I did a video, but I don't know how to give it to you guys, but that's okay. We'll figure it out at a different time. So, so there's two examples of storage facilities out there. One of them has probably, I'm going to say it was a nineties version of a mini storage. And it's not the most eye appealing place to look at. It's got chain link fence around it. It's, uh, you're looking down all the roads of the mini storage as you drive by. And then the next one is a more current one, which I would guess was built in the last three to five years, sort of last. Uh, where they put in and made, uh, like a false storefront looking wall along the the highway, Highway two or whatever they call that out of Airway, but it's Highway two. Uh, they, they made, and that wall is probably a two-story wall rather than a six-foot wall. So, so you don't see anything inside. You look at inside, you see, you can see some stuff from some angles. But you can see that the RV storage part of it is covered. It looks like it's a higher-end RV storage place. It's not an enclosed RV storage, but it's a covered RV storage. It, uh, it's, you don't notice any of the, you can't see down any of the rows of, of storage areas where you'll see as we drive by storage places, one of the highest stories you get is the guy that has his junkyard inside his storage. And he's working on it on Saturday and have his junkyard is down in front of the storage unit. We've all seen it if you've been around storages, but that's not unusual to see that type of an environment when you drive by. So this, this gives you, this one, the, the one I liked out there, and I, I think that one of the things I would maybe be more inclined to agree to a story to, to both RV storage or mini storage type place. Is if we can include in our, our recommendations for change and make the, the wording changes that force us a little bit of architectural better than what we have today. I'm not convinced a six-foot wall gets you there. I'm not convinced a six-foot wall with a fifteen or ten-foot evergreen is going to get you there. Uh, it, it just is too easy to see over that. I, I, I see things around our city. And, and for example, our Huntwood, uh, there's a bunch of houses that border that Huntwood facility that are looking at waste piles. They're looking at a bunch of trailers sitting out in the field. They're looking at an unkept field. They're not, it's just, it's just not very pleasant. And that's what I, I always worry about, that type of stuff in our city, is that we allow, the waste piles just kill me. I cannot understand how we can allow concrete piles and asphalt piles to just build up on somebody's land. And you look at Huntwood and it's cleared on the backside. It's out inside of Apple Way. It's out of sight of Multer. But it sure is in sight from Rocky Hill. But it sure is in sight from Rocky Hill residence, you know? So that's the type of things that bother me. And the next thing is what is an RV or and/or a mini storage become? The mini storage I'm not too worried about because they're usually enclosed. Uh, they're usually, if you do the architect, right, you can hide them from the, the eyesore and stuff them. RV storage. My RV storage in Manchea, two locations. Here at one location, my son has one at another location in Post Falls. And I would tell you, RV storage places become, people will bring in the junk. Yes, I don't even know why they pay what they have to pay to store a piece of junk inside an RV storage and they look like crap. I'm sorry, but that's, they just don't look good. And that, that's why I worry about is, is our ability to basically sort or enforce the standards and the standards among management of, of a, of an RV or a, a, a storage facility. Do we have that ability? Do we think we can enforce standards that we don't turn into this junk pile looking place? And that's, that's probably my biggest concern I have with, with any type of RV storage places. I, I know too many of them all over the place that have turned into these junk piles. I, there's one in Manchea that I, I kept at and I wasn't so sure people weren't living in there in their rigs inside the storage facility. From what I could tell, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know that they, they become, sometimes they become a contractors. You know, they keep their contractors equipment there because it's fish delivery link. You look at us where all of us are controlled by what kind of trucks and vehicles can be out in front of our homes. So we're always looking for someplace to put something, well, utility trailers getting in there. It's amazing. It's, it is amazing if you drive through storage facilities, what management can let it go. Cause they, they don't care if it's a piece of crap. They, they get the same amount of money for that stall or storage area. So that's, that's probably, I haven't seen if I had anything else here. Not if, if you guys tell me how to send you, I can send you the video, the two videos of the two places out of the airway. The one I really do appreciate, and I think in order for me to go down that way of wanting a storage, I would have to have assurance that we could, you know, get something in there that forces our architectural design to make it even more hidden. It's not a business in my mind. It's, uh, you know, we, we try to compare it to a car dealership or a, or an RV dealership or something. But those, those are generally speaking newer rigs. They're generally speaking well camp. They're not, they don't turn into junks. They don't turn into a bunch of black tired vehicles sitting out there in their, in their facilities. So it, it does have a light view, but it can be, it can go really sour fast.
So Rick, what I would sort of suggest, if you can send those videos to me that we can share with the planning question. Um, sometimes a picture is worth a thousand words and we may get some, have some thoughts about what sort of design standards we might be able to incorporate if we wanted to go down that path.
Yeah, I, I will, I will do that.
Send it to me. I'll share it with everyone and then we can talk about that at our next.
Cause I don't think showing them on my phone is going to work. So that's my input on what I think of facilities are not necessarily closed to, but I worry about the, the standards and and our enforcement capability of standards that we would expect in one R C.
I go along with a lot of what Rick said. I have some concerns about just what a storage facility looks like. Uh, mini storage, most of the ones that I know of in the area also include RVs. And having been an RV owner that was scrambling to find a place to store a 40 foot motorhome. Uh, I can tell you on one side, I, I really wish there were more of them, RV storage facilities. Uh, however, my other concern is environmental. I've never seen an RV that didn't leak, uh, including my 40 foot diesel motorhome. It leaked diesel fuel, it leaked oil, it leaked from the toilet. I mean, and they leaked and that worries me, you know, small amounts. Mini stories, I think if we could put some design requirements to make them more attractive. Cause most of them just look like rows of garages. And that's pretty much in, in very small garages. Uh, but I think with some design criteria that certainly could be, I, I also agree they're not a very good tax base for us. Uh, there's not a good return on the city or the city in that regard. And I, I worry a little bit about traffic, although I did use mini storage over on Mission when we moved here. Uh, and for a year and never really ran into a lot of problems with traffic. But they have a real problem with mice. I mean, a major problem. And so that's another issue with what's being stored in many storage facilities many times will attract berman. So I have some concerns about environmental issues, both from the leakage of RVs and what, what might be stored within many storage units as well. So I, I, I have a lot of mixed emotions about it, but mostly I think I would be opposed to this point unless I see something more encouraging.
And my two cents, I appreciate Richard doing the homework and I think my first initial response was heck no, I don't want this here. I don't want another trend with fence up with some beat up cars in there. However, I believe that we can, we pose a standard as high enough that we're not going to give, I should think it's a slow lord of the stores places or not. But we get a pretty, pretty high facility that's got some undulations for buildings. It's got covered facilities. If you're going to pay to have your RV there, it's probably going to be a pretty nice RV. Let's make it covered and see some nice changes from the outside with some different angles. It's different architectural standards. Um, I would be in favor of it, however, I go, I do recognize a lower tax base. Um, but I think if we can do a, a place that's going to require not design that is going to be a little bit higher in order to be able to escape some of that stuff. But I do believe that having that available in the city is important. I'd like to see the map again, just to kind of furtherize myself and see what we're talking about. But we can do that online and kind of see what the impacts could be.
Any other comments, anything?
Yeah, my, my concern is somewhere like between the two of you guys. Is, is I, I worked at an RV store going, going to school. And older RVs, you know, when, when tanks deteriorate, you've got all this going into the groundwater. And I would like to see some measure of protection about groundwater. It's like, okay. And I, this is not my field, but, uh, but that either that there's some mitigating factor to deal with this. Or that, uh, maybe it could be incorporated into the design. I don't know. But particularly with older vehicles and, and you're right. I don't, I, I don't care if it's, it's the latest class A off the showroom floor. It leaks because I worked in the parts department. So I dealt with this firsthand, so.
But just a quick anecdote to that end, I have a 40 foot motorhome with eight batteries in it and stored in a, a covered facility. And we had below zero weather for several days and four of my batteries froze. And when they thawed out, all the battery acid went on the ground. And that's one of the things that I have a great concern about is those kind of things that will happen even in a newer class A that I had. So I, I do have a lot of concerns about that.
But we do currently allow boat, recreation vehicle, trailer construction, repair, parts, sales and maintenance now. I mean, that's already allowed. So we've already got that risk.
Exactly.
So whether or not, yeah, I mean, I, I appreciate where we're coming from, but I don't think how much we control that.
You might have less, less policing of a storage facility than you would of a facility that has responsibility and, uh, control of their hazardous materials. Because a storage facility could be an individual owner. I could have my batteries, just like you were talking about, leak all over the ground or I could spill a bunch of oil and I could probably conceal it and not tell anybody. That's going to be the harder part. We're a partnership. They have some already pretty stiff requirements for their facilities to maintain control of, of hazardous materials and hazards.
No, your input is very, very helpful. And I actually, I was thinking, I'm thinking in terms of some of the mitigations we could incorporate to address those concerns. So I think that there are standards that could, that we could come up with now whether it's final to be adequate or not. Another question, but, but again, I, what I'm, what I'm hearing from you is helping better define what kind of standards we might want to impose to protect against those very things.
Yeah. And at the second, repeating myself, which I don't want. But I mean, we, the city has a limited amount of land available. Land is a very precious resource. What's the best use of that land?
Some more discussion I think we have on this and well, at least I did send those two videos to you just now, so.
Wonderful. I will, I will send it out to everybody and we will bring this back for another workshop. And I'll spend a little bit of time digging into some of these issues and finding out what others are doing. Again, because my environmental background, I actually, there were some issues, it's probably in my head that I think that might work. But, but I want to research what others will also.
Zoning map.
All right. We will breeze right through this one because this is stuff you guys already did a work for. It's just showing it on the map. So there were, over the last year, there have been three things that have happened that have, uh, basically resulted in changes to our zoning map. The first one that I'll, I'll talk about was the second annexation from the school district. That one was, um, passed in August, on August 3rd, 2021. Um, and essentially what that, and the ordinance that adopted that adopted a zoning, a zoning land use designation within that ordinance. And so it changed our western, our western boundary. And so that, that change has been reflected on the zoning map. The second one was actually officially adopted last night. The changes to the MTC, the Meadowwood Technology Campus. The, the adopting ordinance on that one also continued a zoning, a zoning designation from industrial to M two. And then the third one is the, uh, the first Central Valley Annexation that, uh, there was a lot of process around it, but essentially there was a land swap between Centennial Properties and Central Valley School District. And there was a piece of property that was, um, they did a boundary line adjustment to make the, the property itself square, shaped like a square. But that ended up giving it two separate zoning designations on one parcel. And so we, um, through resolution through an administrative process and at the request of the property owner, changed the zoning of that to match what the predominant zoning on that parcel was to, um, from a public to an R two, which is fixed residential. So, um, so that, that's also reflected on that. So this is the old map or the current map, if you will. You can see down there in the corner. There's, it's the red boundary, so that's our urban growth area. And the blue is the city boundary. Um, and so that was where down there was annexed in. And then, uh, and then just right next to it, you can see, uh, there's a, a piece of property that has blue and green within it. So that's the Centennial split zone property. That's the one that we changed the whole thing to the M two, or yeah, to the M two. And then, um, over on the other side of the city, in the Meadowwood Technology Center, you can see that it's on this map, it's on industrial and again, they changed that to, to M two. So if you could. And this is the beautiful map that Megan made for us. This is the updated ones. You can see down there in the corner, our boundary changed to include that second annexation and show the zoning designation of mixed residential. And then you can see how that one changed to a solid blue square. So that one's now, uh, M two. And then over on the other side, you can see Meadowhead Tech also changed. I'll just read right here.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead. I have a quick question about, um, I understand there was a railroad easement on the north end of that annexed property that belonged to the county. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. And I'm going to actually point it out on the map here. It's this, this baby right here and, um.
And they're refusing still to vacate that?
That is correct. It's a real estate asset that they want to hang on to until it's convenient for them not to.
Who owned it?
Spokane County.
So that's not part of the city limit?
No, it is, it is within the city limit. It is an abandoned railroad right of way. Now there's a big question here and the big question is whether or not that was, um, whether that was dedicated right of way or whether it was purchased fee simple. And whether then there's a big difference with those. It is dedicated right of way, um, dedicated by the federal government. Then when that, now you have to sue to prove this, but you have to go to court to prove this was the case, but if that wasn't the identity. It's actually supposed to, um, go back to the adjacent property owners. This was a, whereas it was fee simple purchased by the railroad company than the, than the county. Really does have real property right to it. And, um, so I know that a portion of it, where it's spoken in Belton Mall. There was railroad right of way that where it's spoken, Belton Mall is now located. And they actually sued to demonstrate that that was, no, that was, that was dedicated right of way by the present government. It's actually when, when it was, when it was vacated by the railroad, that right of way went back So there, so I don't know that, don't know that until you do the research, but that's, that's a big question out there.
Does the county provide a reason for that, for that they're on the willingness to vacate?
Um, so, so there, so we have a couple county commissioners who, um, still very have, have a have a vision that someday we will have a light rail connection between uh, West Plains, the airport, Spokane and the city quarter line.
But yet they've already vacated it for the roads going in and out of the new high school.
It's not, it's not big. It's just a rented easement.
Okay.
And actually, actually north, in that particular case, they've not granted an easement. If you follow the railroad right of way. There is, in this particular case, the right of way is actually north of Country Vista. Um, in the location, the high school. See what I'm talking about. But there are other places where they have it. So I, I, I can't.
Understand. I won't, I won't offer an opinion. I won't offer.
I was just going to say, would this be an opportunity to clean up that little parcel up there in the river district? That is zone community and you got storage units sitting on it.
So.
Or is that, you can't do it because it's grandpa?
Well, so it's, it's also consistent with, we're going to get into the complaint in just a minute. That might be something that could be done if the property owner was willing to do so. However, um, as part of the periodic conference plan update, we can change the land, change the zoning.
Okay.
But it's, but it, but you can't downzone somebody's property unless they're willing.
These are where is this?
Oh, oh, the, the, the mini storage we talked about, the. Oh, oh, the, the, the mini store that we talked about, that's.
The mini store of a River District that's zoned community center?
Alright, so this one's gonna sound very similar, but it's different, I promise.
So do we have action next time on this too? Or we're gonna stay there?
We're bringing them all forward together. We're gonna bring them all forward together.
Later this year.
Yes, right now, right now, our, um, we're thinking August or September, depending upon how long it takes us to get through some of the more challenging ones.
Do, do we need to ask, do we have any comments on this then, right now? Because are, are we ready to move into that process though?
That's a great question.
I mean, we should, we should solve that now instead of talk about it again. Uh, this is one that unless there's comments or questions or changes anybody wanna make, this should move forward. When, when we do move them all forward? Is that fair?
Yeah, me too, but I've seen a little bit of comments.
Okay, I think, yeah, I think, yeah, let's make sure we recognize that.
Okay, that's very much appreciated. I will point out that, that both this and what we're doing with the conference of plans is really housekeeping.
Yes, but I just want to make sure we don't have to bring that back.
I, I appreciate that greatly, thank you. I also appreciate that. Okay, so, um, so the difference here is that the other ones were part of our zoning map, which is part of our development code. And this is part of our complaint, these are our future land use maps, which are part of our comprehensive. So there's, they're different documents, and so these are, these are part of, we have to change it in two places essentially. Um, so again, going back to the Central Valley School District annexation, the one that, the one that was most recently done in 2021, uh, again, changed our western boundary. So we had to change all of our comprehensive plan maps to, to reflect the change in our city limits. Um, and then the Meadowwood Technology, which was approved by council last night, um, changed the land use designation from an industrial to an M2. Um, and so again, going back to what we were just talking about, all of these will be included in the doct, the docting process, which we'll go through uh, in that plate and center. So this is, the one on the left is the new map. You can see down there that the, the school district property has kind of squared out our, our city limits. And then we've got the Meadowwood Technology, which was purple and is now blue. Um, and then the one on the right is our, our existing or our current map.
That is the change here and also the change here, which was justified by resolution.
Before, before, I just have a little question, I have a point. There's this little bump out.
That's that resident, that, that resident. That's a person that did not, that's right there.
There's a little five acre farm out there, and they did not want to be in.
Gotcha, okay. Just wondering what that was.
Great question. Next slide, it's just gonna be a blow up of the, of the map. So this is the map bigger, just to give you a better idea of the changes. Again, it's just that the city boundary and then the, the personal care. You can go forward, so these next ones are just, so this is a map of the annex areas of the city. Again, we had, we had to update the, the city boundary, so all the maps in our account and were essentially updated. So they all have to come forward, we, we have to do all of this, even though there aren't, this one actually does have the, will be impacted because it reflects the annexation. Uh, so this is just our city boundary map. Again, we, we, by annexing in that little piece of the, of the school district to change our boundary, and so they had to change our boundary now. This is the street system now. Um, again, the, the change is just the inclusion of the Central Valley School District property. And this is the cultural landmarks, which is a map in our hot map, that now reflects the original high school and has the, the the new school district property incorporated.
It all looks fabulous.
Megan is our map maker.
No comments, questions? So let's move that one on over to you, so we have to talk.
Now we're gonna jump into a little weightier topic, and that's parking standards.
In this one, we have not addressed yet.
We have not addressed this yet, so, um, uh, let me just kind of jump in, so, um, the reason why we're addressing this, um, we, we're looking to update minimum vehicular and bicycle parking requirements to be more consistent and the standards based comments and challenges that we have is that we're getting quite a few administrative variance requests on it. And we're all over the map in terms of how we, what we require or don't require. Some cases, we are way more aggressive than what our parking requirements are in what the, than what general demand is anticipated for two and land use. In other cases, we're way under, like significantly understated. And, um, one of the things, one of the problems, one of the most frequent demands or of requests for parking areas is that we get are related to having a maximum parking limit. And, um, again, because of the value of land, because of the cost of asphalt, um, people are not generally going to put in more parking than what they need. And so the challenge is, if you know your business, um, and you know what your business domain is, um, you're going to put in enough parking spaces that are, um, that are consistent with what, what you experience. Um, particularly when you have multiple branches, et cetera. So we have gotten three, um, I think probably, this has come on three, four, five times over the course of the last two years, where we have someone who's saying, who's, who, we allow for, our minimum is very, our minimum is very skinny in terms of parking requirements. Our, and our maximum is that you can't do more than 50% of, so 150% of the minimum parking. And sometimes that's not enough. And, um, we have people go through the process of going through, have their engineer document why they need more parking, and reference the IT parking standards, et cetera. Give us a justification because it's shared use parking or because. So there's a variety of different reasons why you might require what our standards, um, prior to including that our standards might not be the best standard. And so, so that's, so that's the second reason why we will be looking at this, probably the biggest reason. We also wanna update several problematic requirements and inconsistencies. Um, so we might have one requirement here for our parking standards in the development code that's different from what is in the engineering design standards. That's the case with parallel parking. So, uh, we also have, um, some limitations on about, interesting one. So we require one bicycle parking space for every dwelling unit. In any multifamily apartment situation. Now for, um, employment centers for a variety of different things, we do allow them to, uh, to provide bike storage lockers or, um, uh, units to like in, internal inside storage for them. We don't provide that for multifamily, we're looking at a 400 unit apartment complex. Providing 400 outdoor bicycle parking spaces is just silly. And so, so we want to provide the same exception that we do elsewhere. So there's, there's several examples, that last one is actually kind of a big deal. Is that, um, we have a new WAC related to, uh, electric vehicle infrastructure that we need to, we now have another standard that, um, we have to be providing for. And it's funky because it is, it excludes a number of, um, building occupancy types where this has to be installed, but there's a number that are not. And so we wanna make sure that we're getting it out there and getting it out to our development. What the requirements are, under state law, for providing for this electric or, uh, electric vehicle infrastructure. And it's, and it's interesting, we'll get into that in a moment, that's the reason. So.
Okay, quick question, are we gonna look at, like, the size of the parking spaces?
Yeah, so we, we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit also. So I'm gonna go into the red lines in just a moment. Um, I did wanna point out that on your desk, you actually have the red lines we updated. It, it's a slightly revised version from what's in your packet, that's guy. And we're gonna go through that in just a minute, but first of all, I wanted to talk about the parking data source methodology. So, um, uh, we actually used, um, the, ITE is the Institute of Transportation Engineers. They are the go-to source for both trip generation and also for parking, parking standards. And, um, we used, I actually purchased the ITE Parking Generation Manual, the edition, the electronic version. Um, just because it was a lot cheaper. Um, but, um, and went through our categories. And, uh, to, to use this, basically what I was shooting for in terms of a minimum parking standard was actually something that was pretty close to the midpoint on all of the uses. And because we do this based upon thousand square foot or whatnot, or, or we have there's different standards that we use, um, tried to get it so that it was close, in, in close proximity to that midpoint. And, um, again, by, again, as, as we talked about, um, we were suggesting that we eliminate the maximum parking limit and doing so that will provide a lot of grace for, um, the development community. So my suggestion would be that I wanna stop this chair for just a second. And, um, I wanna share something different. There we go. So we have before you Article 103D, which is vehicle and bicycle parking. Um, I wanna go through what the red line changes are. The first in paragraph 103D dash one, it's not a big deal, but that's insider planning terminology and it's a certain value or purpose they have. I think you're. Um, and obviously, if you think that it adds value, happy to put it back in, but I didn't see. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure I even knew what the author meant by that. So first of all, I wanted to just call this out, 103D3, the vehicle parking standards, we'll get into the, this is the one where we actually, I actually went and researched what the standard, what the, what the parking generation standards are in the United Church Generation Manual, and tried to get them pretty much in line at that point. And there's, um, and, and I'll talk about the ones that I did and, and get your thoughts on them. But one of the things that I did want to, um, talk about was this, or I wanted to look at was specifically the vehicle parking minimum standards. And it talks about off-street parking spaces may include spaces in garages, carports, parking lots, indoor driveways. If vehicles are not parked in a vehicle travel way, including emergency or fire access lines, public right of way, pathway, or landscape area. So one of the challenges that we had with some of the smaller scale, um, the, the smaller scale multifamily that we're seeing a lot of in River District, um, is the fact that they will count the garage parking space and the parking space directly in front of it. In, in no community that I have worked in before, will they allow them to count tandem parking spaces. Particularly when it's an apartment unit that only has one garage space, because it's not like you can necessarily get around that, it's, it's called cause for jockeying. So, um, I just wanted to point that out, that I really think that, again, my recommendation is that we that, um, that we include the language that we also exclude tandem parking spaces in that.
Yeah, tandem parking spaces are just simply storage spaces, they're not parking spaces.
Exactly, um, so, so anyhow, so, um, so one of the things I did wanna do, uh, one of the first things I looked at was I kind of came up with an average for multifamily and single family and attached housing. And I think that by doing it by bedrooms, um, it's a dismount, things get changed from the time that it would be to what's currently done. It comes eventually, it may change over time and whatnot. Um, and frankly, um, uh, if you look at just by units, the average is 1.75 spaces per, well, unit for attached to single family or multifamily. And so it simplifies the equation tremendously, and we don't get to play the games as they change, uh, the building plans on the, um, the units. Um, the next space, the next one that I called out, one that I didn't change, I didn't change because they were pretty, pretty close on to what ITE Parking Generation Manual recommended. Um, so restaurant, garden, ice cream, I struck this one space per four seats. We never really know how many seats you're going in when we're doing the site plan for a new restaurant. And so it really, and if you have a new owner and they, they reconfigure things, it may end up with different numbers. It's, it's not really very practical from a roof view standpoint. The one space per 100 gross square feet is pretty, it was, um, was spot on with the ITE for generation. So I would recommend you to get rid of that. Um, theaters, auditoriums, stadiums, and museums, actually, um, it was, uh, when, when I looked at it in ITE for generation, we're a little, we're a little light on parking here. It's really one space per three thick seats or one space per 150 gross square feet, so whichever is greater. Industrial manufacturing, now this is one that's interesting, and I'm gonna throw it out there, we were just talking about this in design review. Um, so there's actually a pretty wide range of, of trip generation in, um, in warehousing, industrial manufacturing, and some of it has to do with, um, some of it has to do with, um, or except warehouse, industrial manufacturing, some of it has to do with, um, with the type of using, how much, how much equipment, how automated it is, those sorts of things. Um, but, but the thousand square feet was more on, on point with what ITE was showing as the midpoint for that. Um, this concept that we provide one space per two employees on the largest shift just doesn't make any sense to me, particularly in a community where we have limited transit opportunities. And yeah, I mean, yes, we're a walkable community, walkable, likeable community, but really? One for every two employees, that's not a lot of cargo. Um, and, and you'll see that, and there's a cut, several places where we use that standard that just doesn't make any sense. Uh, again, self-storage, uh, self-service, uh, storage facilities. Now, I'm gonna say that because we do have existing, it probably would stay in here, and because we don't know what's gonna happen with this, but I did adjust it, um, uh, based upon what was being recommended in the ITE for generation manual. So that one, if, if we decide not to go with it, we may ask, give some thought to whether or not we would eliminate this altogether, but right now I kept it in there. Um, again, warehousing, the same thing, uh, one space per 1,000 gross square feet or one space per two employees. And I will say warehousing is the one that's a little weird because, because there's actually quite a bit of range in warehousing depending upon whether it is, um, an automated high pallet storage warehouse. Um, the type of warehouse it is, is, is everything as to whether, what the range is. So, um, it could be thousands gross square feet is the midpoint, but there were uses, or no, excuse me, I'm sorry, 2,000 was midpoint. But there were, but the range was so broad that it seemed like, um, we probably wanted to keep it there. But this is one where I'd rather have people show me, show me the parking than, um, under count for parking.
No, I'm sorry, your screen is being shared right now.
Oh, I'm sorry. When did I lose that? It was sharing it to begin the question.
No.
No.
It never came up.
Never came up.
Okay.
I'm just following.
There it goes.
There.
There we go. Um, okay, so next is childcare. 1.5 spaces per employee, um, or one space per four students, whichever is greater. And again, that's, um, are one per two employees, and that's all we said to make any sense. Um.
So is that a standard out of the?
This is a standard out of ITE for Generation. And I looked at both students and I looked also at employees, so.
Students, kind of, drive.
No, no, they're here, but they're here and still dropping off.
Drop them off.
I, I fully understand that, and I, I do that a lot, so it's a grand here, uh, but.
But the, the, the trip generation, if, if the students given.
I just wanted to repeat, I was with that number one.
So, so, so I'd love to show you this sometime, because this is actually statistical statistics. And I can't, I can't, there's, some of them have more study points than others, but this is one that has a lot of study points.
I'm sure it does, yeah.
Um, do you have any actual data of usage, bicycle usage in literally? I mean, I, I'm not a bicyclist, and in deference to our city councilman, Mr. Sullivan, who's listening in, who is a bicyclist, um, this seems awfully generous. I'm not sure we have that many people riding bicycles as a means of transportation.
This is not bicycle parking, this is real park, but this is regular parking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have not a bicycle.
I thought you were still on my circle.
No, I haven't gotten to that.
All right, okay, I'll wake up now.
Um, chapels and mortuaries, churches and similar places of worship, uh, one space per 100 gross square feet. Um, or one space per four six seats, whichever is greater. Again, this. Um, I changed the title of group homes to supportive housing, because for those of you who are on here, went through the, the major changes to our housing code, uh, last year, based upon, uh, a fast track through the legislature. Um, we now don't have group homes, we have supportive housing. But that, but the standards were still spot on. Hospitals, again, uh, four spaces per patient, that are 2.5 spaces per 1,000 gross square feet, whichever is greater. It's again, based upon, we had two different studies in the, in the New Trip Generation Manual. High schools, uh, one space per four students. Um, colleges, universities and trade schools, four spaces per 1,000 gross square feet or one space per five students, whichever is greater. Again, it's, some of these, I'm like, oh wait, that doesn't make sense, but comparatively in my mind, but I'm using the data, and the data, the data is driving it. Uh, public utilities and facilities, well, again, one space per employee on the largest ship plus one space per company vehicle. And recreational vehicle parks and campgrounds. So. Right now, I gotta find out where I'm.
Well, you, this is section B, which is totally eliminated.
Yes, that's the maximum, that's the maximum part of that, and I explained why we were doing that.
Yep.
Um.
So, sorry, the question, he says, say like metalwood campus, they're gonna be changing from a, some type of an office environment to a school environment, so the standard is different for parking spaces.
Yes, so they have to go through a change of use.
So, so would we catch that as a city during the permit, probably for changing building and layout or whatever?
Change of use, any change of use requires that, yes.
Would we, would we catch that in all cases if the, I, and I don't have an example, I guess, but if a building were to sell, we don't necessarily have a permit process if there's nothing to be done that requires a permit inside the building.
That is correct.
And so we would, that would fall, fall blind to us somewhat, right?
Yes, but again, again, if there's, if there's not a change in, that requires a building permit, there's not likely.
A change in use, yeah, yeah.
Where you have.
Change of law.
But you would catch that by permitting, because they would have to permit, like the school would have building permits to make a lot of patients.
Metalwood Tech campus is kind of a good one, because it's so overparked, it's kind of like the one on the corner of Appleway.
But, but like you said earlier, there are, we don't want to reach next ones either, right?
Right.
So, you don't want it to be too much parking.
Right, and, and that's the problem, is that, that it's so very much overparked. That's one of the, one of the opportunities that's there for redevelopment.
For the right reefer, yeah, okay.
I assume where you have different issues on the same building, then, I mean, what I've seen is, say, within the parking space, they'll say this is reserved for ABC School, or this was reserved for.
We don't necessarily, but what we do do is we require them to provide us, um, the pro rata, uh, parking calculations. So how much is office, how much is, um, restaurant, how much?
I'm just thinking where you have multiple tenants in the same building.
Yeah.
What I've seen is usually, they put, this, this parking is reserved for this restaurant, this parking is reserved for this school.
Some places do, but we don't.
We don't do that, okay.
We don't require it, the, the landlord or the tenant may require it.
Gotcha, okay.
I have a question about why is there a difference between, there's one standard for high schools and another for colleges, universities and trade schools. It's, it's, it's one in four and one in five, I, I don't see a distinction.
Again, that was the one that I was kinda stretching my head saying, okay, what the data says that that's what it is. I think because with, with colleges and trade schools, um, many young students that are no longer living at home, so they may live close to campus, walk, or ride their bike, uh, they may live in dorms, I don't make sense.
Yeah, they're not at school all day, they're only there, maybe a couple periods.
Right, yes, yes, okay.
That makes perfect sense.
I would bet, like, Eastern probably has higher parking needs than, say, uh, WSU, because it's, it's.
Oh, yeah.
Close campus at WSU, but at Eastern, it's like a new school.
But, but, but on that is how they wrap that, is they give students free bus passes, or their, their, as part of their, uh, student, uh, activity pass.
Right.
Anyhow, so, but, but yes, your points, we'll take it. Um, so just jumping ahead, um, credit for on-street parking. So we talked about, so we recently had a situation where we were looking at somebody who was actually in the I-zone. Uh, we just added all this on-street parking on Knox Avenue, and the code says, well, you know, you can only count the adjacent on-street parking, if you're in a mixed-use zone, it's like, why is that? If you're talking adjacent on-street parking, you should be able to count that towards your parking. And so, um, we proposed that we just, that, that we just eliminate that, the, the caveat, that it has to be in mixed-use zone. I think you would apply anywhere, most of our, our collectors and art materials generally don't have parking on the ticket much. Um, but in a local, a local street, whether it is commercial, mixed-use, industrial, doesn't really matter. At the end of the day, if you are providing on-street parking, why would you not allow them to count that if they so desired? Just adjacent, not, I don't know. Um, and again, that kinda helps, that kinda helps with the concept that we don't wanna build more parking than what we need. So, and again, I'm gonna say that, um, generally speaking, um, the, the business case is gonna drive what parking is. Business, a business is not gonna build more than what they need, but they are not gonna build less than what they need by that. So they're usually trying to get, find that seat spot.
I can't get it out of my head, but I can tell you right now that Indiana and, uh, Harpers Parkway, that whole parking drop-off or kids there for the daycare and stuff, that is the biggest mess I've ever seen. That's why it's concerning to me.
It, it absolutely is, but it's not, it's because, it's because of the parking standards in the River District. And that's one of the things that once we get, once we get this where, where the planning commissioner's happy, we'll be sitting down with Greenstone, proposing that we do the same thing.
The roads are so narrow, it's terrible.
Well.
I would have to measure it, I, I, you and I had this discussion, because it's, and it is turning into just what I thought it would, is that, that parking spots aren't quiet enough for parking.
Well, and, and because it's a, it's a preschool, it's not a daycare, it's a preschool. And so there's a fixed start time and a fixed end time, and everybody drops off and picks up at the same time, and then on the parking.
But, right, and, and also you have the, the restaurant businesses there too, that are, those parking, whatever you call those things, there, most of them are not very quiet, when you, when you consider trying to park and get a vehicle by them.
So they have the different standard for parking in those neighborhood commercial clusters that they allow in the River District. And that's one of those things that, like I said, when we get, when we're comfortable with this, I'm gonna look for, for with the River District. And also, that's one we have to look at, though, because that's, and I would agree with that, that's, it's been, I, I understand you don't want it to be a walkable thing, but people can drive also.
Right, I mean, you, we have, do we allow for anything in here as far as, like, I know that we have trucks to delivering product to, to the restaurants there during daycare drop-off time, you're, I'm going down Indiana wrong side of the road, it gets so long. And so I'm just wondering, is, is the standard to, you know, control things like drop-off and.
Also, we also have requirements for loading zones, and we might look at that a little bit, but, um, it's in this chapter, the challenge is with those particular businesses, they were too small to actually require loading stuff.
We should work it out, because if we're gonna continue to do that all the way down to Harvard, it's, I'm moving.
Fair enough. Um, so.
Are there standards for size of street parking?
Yes.
And widths and stuff, and, and.
And I almost have the.
Because I would guess that some of the areas you're talking about, those standards don't fit. I, I would guess, I know you said they're different, but my guess is they don't.
I almost feel like it's a potential of social traffic there.
If we keep going, and I can't get this up on my screen, because my, I believe it's doing something weird right now.
We got it.
Okay, so if you go on to paragraph F, so, um, we do actually have parking stall standard dimensions in compact parking spaces. We do allow 50% of required, uh, parking may be designed and labeled as compact. Um, and what, what I'm doing, because we added, because we were changing some standards here for parallel, and I didn't like what was happening with, uh, the width, we just added, uh, we just added a column for compact stalls. Um, we should never have a parallel parking space that is less than eight feet wide. An eight feet by 22, right now we have it as nine feet by 24, but in our engineering design standards, parking's actually only eight feet. And that's, that's standard in most communities, the width for parallel on-street parking is only eight feet, generally speaking. It's also consistent with the River District SAP and a number of flats that have already been improved. So, um, so the only inconsistency is here in our development code, as to the, the parallel eight by 24. We did some research, though, we got some pushback on the 24, and, um, we call Greenstone by for variance to get, um, eight by 22. They're, actually, they wanted eight by 18, I think. Anyhow, long story short is that we, um, looked at, um, we looked at adjacent jurisdictions and found out that we were really the outlier for 24. Um, I think that, I think it was eight by 19, 19 was also the outlier, 22 was pretty much, was, was common. And so, um, we granted the variance, but I wanna update it here, because they haven't done the research. I know that we were, that we're being a little excessive there, and nobody with a hunk of big truck actually parks in parallel parking spaces anyhow.
You say.
Do you read?
I work in parallel all the time.
Okay.
Hey, you're.
Yes. I do, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, question, um, just listening to the, it's a little bit off topic, but can, um, delivery times be specified?
So they absolutely can, and if we're having a traffic issue, we may want to, again, that's on the landlord to say, okay, you gotta. But, but I, but I, I think that's a good point for the, the daycare versus the restaurants there. I, I, I understand that is a problem, it is a problem. Um, so we can certainly talk to someone about that issue. Um, moving on, bicycle parking standards. I didn't have a ton of changes to this in reality, I think this works pretty well, generally speaking. Um, but I, first, the, the one thing that I did change, let's see it on page nine here. Um, the inverted U-style racks are recommended, well, first of all, I don't want to invite developers, um, possibility, and I also do know that, that, um, I had some staff people in the city of Spokane that were actually very avid bikers. And, um, I heard from them that it's not actually the bikers' preferred bike standard, so. There you have it, or, or rack standard. So the other thing is that, um, and this is something that, um, in other communities, they've done, um, art installations where people have proposed artistic bike racks, and I think that that might be something that I want to prevent us from doing that at some point in the future also, that's kind of just crazy. Options for storage, so this is where I was telling you about.
Where, where are we at?
So this is on page nine, paragraph E.
Nine, E.
Yeah, so, oh wait, I got my paper back.
Yeah.
No, I'm good.
That's okay, we're there.
Okay, all right, my apologies, I don't know what's going on with the, with that, but, um, all righty. Um, so page nine, paragraph E, bicycle parking requirements for long-term and employee parking can be met by providing bicycle storage rooms, bicycle lockers, racks, or other secure storage spaces inside or outside of the building. That would seem to make sense for multifamily also, and that's, we've actually, that's how we've been applying to code, but it nicely explicitly says that.
So.
Does that, does this apply to these rental scooters that are just left on the sidewalk?
So rental scooters are, that's a whole different topic. Rental scooters are not actually allowed in the city of, whatever you like, they're not, they're, they're, they don't have, they're.
They're here.
They, they are here occasionally, because even though, uh, whether it's Lime, or I can't remember, that it's the other one that does it, there, there's two that do it, um, in the area, but, um, they have a geo, they have a geo fence, but the bikes can get a little bit inside that geo fence. But I, again, that might be something that we look at in the future, I know that there's at, at least one council member who's very interested in that, so. Um, but yes, we, I, I would think that those would be some of the things that we would address if we had a contract with them, if there's any, and if we change some of our ordinances, right now, our ordinance is actually.
Right, okay.
Please, I'm just wanting to know other options for storage, I, I don't know where you, like, but maybe it goes with other secure storage space, but in, in reference to multifamily housing or any family housing, I think that they have garages.
Yes.
Most, most folks will put their bikes in the garage.
Yes.
And so, so I think maybe as a preventative or, or example, on the secure spaces inside or outside the buildings, it might be okay to put a garage there, just to show that, that kind of applies to multifamily housing.
Yeah, I think that's absolutely, that's absolutely good point, and that was my point, that's what we tell them all the time. You put a rack on your, on the balcony, a rack, um, in the garage, you can do something, you know, so yes. So I, I agree with you that, um, again, that was a true, now, here's the part, I didn't make any changes. So I, I agree with you that, um, again, that was a, now here's the part, I didn't make any changes to our loading space standards, but, um.
What's, where are you at now? Oh, okay, I'm with you. Page ten.
Yeah, yes, page ten. But I can take a look at that and, uh, I can take a look at that and see. And I don't, I'm not sure that this is a requirement. I, I, I believe that when I'm getting to the River District, that's not actually a requirement. So we'll have to look at that, but, um. The last area, and I know we're, we're, we're getting one into two here, and, um, I know you're tired of listening to me. I'm tired of talking.
Before you get, before you get to the EV, is, is golf carts just considered a vehicle with respect to parking spaces?
So, so people can provide golf cart parking.
Is that, is that an actual thing, golf cart parking?
Yes, it is. And some places do provide golf cart parking. However, they don't get to count it towards their car parks.
Okay, so, okay.
So, so that was, that was a question that came up when we were working on Trailhead. Because we are providing some golf cart parkings one might expect in our community at that facility. But it didn't get to, they didn't get to count towards our car parks.
Gotcha.
So, so good point, but since we are a golf cart community, should our parking standards have a golf cart standards for any businesses? I'd ask you more than saying it needs to, but is there something that we need to state in our, about golf carts?
So there's a couple, I have a couple thoughts. One is that we provide, we allow up to fifty percent of the parking stalls to be compact. We could contact, we could provide that for contact with golf carts. Um, you, I, the question is, and I guess there's two different questions. One question is, do you want to require people to provide golf cart parking? Or do you, or do you just want to allow them to count it towards?
Well, and maybe that's.
Or do you set a standard for a golf cart?
Or at least allow or recognize it in our standards, recognize it.
There's no point for a standard if you're not actually going to require it.
Gotcha. Okay, okay.
Or, or to recognize. And maybe that's why you don't have a standard for, but if you, you could make a standard in allowance for golf cart parking. If you thought that was.
If you, yeah, if you cross one of the compact cars, you give, so you have to have more of them.
Or, or, because right now, I mean, most golf cart drivers, I guess, if I drive the same lane, I just park in a.
Bring a parking spot.
Or I drive it through the front door, one of the two.
Parking on the sidewalk, okay.
A lot of us, and some people do, but.
And get a ticket.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just asking, do it, you dress, and I'm not saying we have to just join the diet. You, you made a good point, if I don't have a, if I don't have a requirement to do it, I don't have the standard to, to go along with it. And I don't want to make people have to have golf cart parking necessarily.
Well, to take that argument to absurdity, now we can also talk about parking for motorcycles, parking for electric bicycles, so on and on. So I, I'll see you, I'm okay now. I see a never-ending issue.
Yeah.
We don't need no comparison.
Okay, cause I wanted to drive my semi.
So onto EV, we, we did have a section on EV infrastructure, um, already. But it wasn't, um, it's really just what you, um, just kind of recognizing that that's the future of what's happening. Um, and where, if you're going to provide it, where it can or cannot be provided. But the new standard is actually what thou shalt, what you are required to provide. And, um, it's, this is out of WAC fifty-one fifty dash zero four two nine. And it was, it just went into effect last year. And, um, it's kind of an oddly written, um, uh, rule in that it applies to construction of all new buildings except a whole bunch of occupancies. So it, it's written in the negative kind of, and which, um, is a little frustrating, but it, I'm, I followed in, in crafting a, a code that would exactly meet the, what was being required. I used very similar language. I did, however, for, um, general education, um, provide the cat, what the categories were, so what these occupancies were. So the ones that it doesn't apply to are R three, uh, uh, occupant, these are occupancy groups. So group R three, which is congregative care facilities with sixteen or fewer occupants. Group U occupancies, which are accessory structures. Group A occupancies, which are assembly. E structure, uh, occupancies, which are educational, or group M, which are mercantile stores. Except where employee parking spaces are designated. And we have a requirement where parking is provided, ten percent of parking spaces shall be provided with electric charging wall structure in compliance with the following. And so there's requirements related to the electrical rooms. There's required, there's requirements related to, um, actual electrical, the, the electrical vehicle charging infrastructure, um, or the minimum number of amps, et cetera. And it also requires, so it's not just saying ten percent, but you also have to provide additional service capacity for future years because they see us, because it's looking to the future when, when, uh, at some point, I guess, the anticipation is that we're going to be all larger.
So, so is this code going to be that required for businesses that are already existing?
Technically, it's, no, it's only for new construction.
That's odd. I mean, that's really odd, they were.
Only for new construction, but what they're doing is they're basically, they're, so now you're providing the electrical vehicle charging. Also, um, you're also providing capacity for future. And so we had, so Trailhead is a great example, so that, that, this actually came up in Trailhead. But we're all, all of the, all of the occupancies for the different sections are either assembly or mercantile. So we're okay unless we're going to designate employee parking, in which case we have to provide some free parking. I do, I believe we're providing one anyhow, just because trying to enable service. But again, because you're not there long enough to charge, the intent is for you to be able to provide this. This also, also applies to residential. So, um, anyhow.
This is kind of crazy.
It is, yeah.
I'm just, yeah, conceptually, uh, why would a, why would a commercial restaurant?
A commercial res, restaurant.
Would not require.
Would not require it, so it would not require it because it's assembly. And so people aren't there for a long time.
Right.
The intent is for, but if you're in a manufacturing plant, as an example, you're going to have employees driving electric vehicles or for eight hours so they can get their vehicles charged while they're at work.
Correct, so, uh, okay. Yeah, how, how would it ever work for a, an apartment complex?
So it depends, I, I mean.
Where you don't have garages, where you have carports.
So that you just have, well, again, a certain percentage of the carports, or a certain percentage of most apartments, even if they have carports, also have uncovered parking. So I would presume that they would put it there. Again, I didn't write this. This is right out of Washington, the, the Washington Administrative Code, so.
Fresh off the press.
Yeah, fresh off the press. It's actually in effect now, what I wanted to get into our code as a way to push it out and start with education on what requirements are. Construction forms.
On both pages, you reference a section out of the WAC. You, you probably need to reference the WAC and the rich materials too.
In the what? Oh, yeah.
You gotta reference the WAC also, you just referenced the section. So you probably ought to recognize it comes out of the WAC, because you say in section four twenty-nine point two. Yeah, on page twelve, and you did that on page thirteen also. So you just, just get the WAC as well.
Oh, yeah, 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 I, yes, I mean, I will.
Just get.
And actually, I meant to add that what the actual paragraphs is in here rather than what the, what the WAC reference was, but.
Yeah, because right now it's just a comment, but I think it needs being.
No, we're actually referenced above, so I'm gonna.
Was it referenced above?
It's, so.
I thought it was in the first paragraph, wasn't it?
Maybe I missed it. Maybe I just missed it, I just didn't see.
No, no, no.
It's referenced in the comments over here, that's why.
Yeah, the section, the section, that's the section, that's what the WAC says. But that section four two-nine point two is actually the first paragraph.
Didn't it define here in three-five-eight dot sixty-three dot one oh seven? That was in the first paragraph, uh, on page eleven.
That's a, that's an RCW, that's out of the WAC, so.
I'm sorry.
It's, it's defined in that, she's got it on its actual, it's big, it's.
Yeah, 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 no, no.
It's thirty-one dot six four.
My point is that I'm not going to reference the WAC. What I'm going to do is I'm going to reference the paragraph that applies to in this and that. My numbering system is different, that's.
Oh, I get it, out of your own writing.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, because, because on this one, it talks about, it talks about when you have to have the.
Well, that's a good catch.
Have the, uh, capability to, to, uh, expand your, your charging stations. I don't know that that's, I didn't see that written in here.
Paragraph two A is what it's referencing in.
Okay.
This was actually like, the B here would have been a three, but it seemed like it was your done because both of them are, are, are the infrastructure standards, you know, anyhow.
I, I just didn't see how. And, I'm sorry, I just, like in three, in, in to be.
I.
I, I, you talk about future.
Right.
I don't see where anything in here, you wrote something about what the future looks like.
Yeah, so all it's referring to is electrical rooms. And so.
Yeah, but it's.
So it's, so I, all I should say is paragraph A above. I'm, I'm sorry, it just, I was doing some cutting and pasting because I was down to the wire. I'm getting this out at five o'clock on Friday night. So I missed it. Same thing for II, it's referencing the requirements of paragraph A above.
It, I, I, well, you can talk, but I think there's more to II in it.
Oh, no, it's for the ten percent.
That, that I don't know what future sizing you have to account for. It says a service capacity, and this was actually a guest page or comment, the future installations as defined in section four twenty-nine point two. And I don't see what, see anything in here that talks about what the future looks like.
So A talks about that, well, we were required to provide ten percent, ten percent of parking spaces are required to be.
Well, in the future, is there twenty?
The, the future is twenty, so you have to provide.
Okay, I'm sorry.
You have to provide at the room in your, in your electrical room for eventually serving twenty percent of our.
I did, I didn't, I didn't care that that was a future number.
Yeah. So that's, those are the changes to parking. Oh, and it's interesting that the last one is that, again, electrical vehicle charging infrastructure for accessible spaces. And electrical, um, so ten percent of the accessible spaces also have to have the infrastructure. So just, it is what it is. This is not, this is, this is statewide, sorry. So, um.
Oh, this is off topic, but I can see a new business model. We're at the McTuck, we're at the technology center, as a business provided for the tenants. You're going to have a section that's all EV plugin. And they run a golf cart transportation from that lot to the various buildings, right? At, including also.
So the next time you guys see this, and we'll probably do one at the very end before we go into the earnings. Um, I'm going to bring this back, I'm going to look at loading spaces, um, and make some of the changes that you suggested, um, as it relates to this EV, uh, cleaning up the EV, uh, parking infrastructure. And I'm also going to bring back River District, and I'm going to, I will bring back, but I have to have some conversations with, uh, with Greenstone. And make sure that they're on board with changes to their adopted SAPs.
Well, it should meet the standard of that, that I, I, I feel you call it, yeah, I.
Well, it's, it's statewide, so.
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah, but in terms of the I T E, uh, parking generation, then that's, that's the conversation we're going to have.
Right.
So, um, again, we'll, we'll, hopefully we'll, we'll be looking at some changes to River District's, uh, regulations as well. And the next time we talk about this, so.
So that's, so the next thing is to go to reports.
Yeah, and so I just, so. So in terms of the secretary's report, uh, just a couple things. Um, in, at the end of your packet, I wanted you to see the director's administrative interpretation of street light banners. So, um, this came up, we have, um, the Rotary was, uh, had proposed to do a hometown heroes banners on light poles. And talk, talking to a Vista, Vista said, oh yeah, we can do that. The Vista never has, previously was not allowing banners on their light poles. They're now allowing it under certain circumstances, certain standards. And so, um, and the Vista, because the Vista does own the light poles, we have to follow their standards for this. But it's also nothing that was contemplated in the sign code. And so, um, uh, when we get a chance to take a look at it, I think basis for how, um, we're authorized to basically, um, do it, deal with it as an administrative interpretation. The way this works, um, is this kind of carries the weight of law. And still, we do some, until we amend the codes, this follows, it was in an appeal period when we appealed it, um, that it was probably a deal. Um, but we will be incorporating this into our center code amendments. So I wanted to kind of bring it to your attention, what the code says is, from time to time, planning director will, um, will provide planning commission with updates on these administrative interpretations. So please consider yourself updated. And, and again, because we are, because Amy's going to be coming down with a sign code, um, uh, in the very near future. Um, you'll have a chance to kind of get into this, and so this is only a stage to effect, in fact, for a very short time. And so we'll have opportunities to tweak it, so I wanted to get it out there for y'all to think about.
It's very specific for a Vista, though, right, at this point?
Well, because the Vista owns all the streetlights.
Right, right.
Well, the issue is if you open it up for one, you might have to open it up for everyone. So if White Pride or KKK wants to put on banners, we'll have to allow it.
So here's the thing, but, but here's, no, not exactly. Because, and here's, you're correct, and that's, that's, that's a slippery slope here.
Yes.
But the way it works here is that because of Vista, we'll only allow it if it's owned by the, by the jurisdictions, so the municipality, in this case, the city of Liberty Lake. So we would have to accept a donation, and that's where this gets, it gives us a little bit more control. So city council has a donation policy that they, that you can't just donate something, they have to accept the donation. Right? And so should somebody want to donate banners, they'd have to submit it to the city of Liberty Lake. Or you like city council, and they would have, so basically, they would, they would have the ability to not accept the donation. And if you didn't own it, then. And if you didn't own it, then. Then you would not, um, then they could not.
I hope the city attorney looks at this, because it opens us up. Because if we do it for one organization and not others, it opens us up to lawsuits.
So, so he did, and he did, and it's, again, I I understand what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, and it's. Lot kind of tighter open, it's, but, but again, somebody has to actually purchase these, they have, they're actually responsible, and Vista has to agree to it also. They're not our light poles. We're following a Vista's rules, so Vista says we have to own, we don't have to, we don't have to accept the donation for something that's antithetical to.
Right. But lawsuits go after deep pockets.
Understood.
And that worries me.
Well, then no one will be going after the city's Spokane.
Or Vista, yeah.
Or Vista, yeah, they'll be going after Vista.
Yeah, okay, right.
Um, that is all I had for today.
Any reports of the planning commissioners?
That's where I'm charged for speaking. Uh, Lisa, I do have one question for you, and I don't know if you're prepared to talk about it, but. Is a surprise here, on Appleway at Country Vista. There's a application in to put in, I believe it's a hundred and twenty-eight. Uh, or some type of a distribution center or something? Right, are you able to just brief us what you see is going on there at all?
Yes, so it's, yeah, in fact, the the design review committee just, they had a meeting about that.
Oh, they did, so it did get to our designer review.
It did get to designer, now, and we have not issued, we have not yet issued a C P on this.
Who was that?
The threshold determination on it, because we're still talking to the county about, so we're still talking to the county about.
And and that was probably my biggest question, because it it appears that everything I read online that the application had. It requires an interface between the city and the county to take care of. I forget the name, River Road, what's that road over there?
Spokane Bridge Road and.
Spokane Bridge and Appleway, because part of that's city and part of that's county.
So, so it's not at all city. It's not, it's all county.
Well, it's city going out, though, isn't it?
No.
Well, we don't own Appleway.
No, we, so, our.
Don't we stop at the marijuana shop?
There, if you look at it, um, if you look at map up there for the, for the, here, let me, let me pull up, let me go back.
Anyways, I, but when I look at it, I, and I forget the number, but it's like eleven hundred seventy-five vehicles a day. Additional travels, I I think it's a day, I got it right.
Yes, so.
And the studies were done, one of the things I noticed, the studies were done like for rush hour, maybe around, uh. The P M, but it was later than what I remember. When Meadowwood Campus was operating and some of the other places on on Appleway, they were releasing it through P M. And then, traffic study was done like at four to six or something, I I forget the numbers off the top of my head. But but I remember Liberty Lake has a lot of businesses that release around the three P M time. And Appleway used to get rather busy at that time. So I didn't think their study really covered the the rush hour time that we might have here.
So, I would love to dig into that with you.
Okay.
Um, because, because it actually does, that's actually consistent with our P M peak hour, we've done. We generally, you do a larger window than you figure out based upon the traffic counts, if you look at our network analysis, our P M.
Okay, I I just, I live over there, and I remember getting out on Appleway after three sometimes are very difficult. But I also know that that Meadowwood Campus doesn't have the vehicles it used to have, and so.
So, so here's the thing, the thing is that we have, in in our network analysis, we have actually. Used a higher land use value for that parcel, we had assumed that it was going to be manufactured. And so it was a, so we actually had a higher trip generation value now. So, the traffic from that in terms of city of Liberty Lake was actually addressed as part of the network analysis. They will have to participate in Harvard Road mitigation, et cetera, and once Kramer Road overpass. Um, actually is constructed and open and operating once the commercial signals, et cetera. Those operational improvements, um, there'll be no impact to the, um. We will be performing, um, within our acceptable level of service, actually through build out at. At Harvard Road, um, and Appleway. Right, with that in effect, however, but our network analysis, right, so our network analysis did not. Account for what happened, and I want, I want, take a look at the screen real quickly.
And I, I know the question up against a clock, so we might.
So, okay, so, but I I can, just a quick last point, so this is where our city, uh, boundary ends. This is where, where.
Maybe you're reading, so this is our.
No.
Okay.
This is where the, um, this, this is where the crossing is over here. So, it's, so, Appleway, the the stretch that was done last year was done by the county, that's home by the county. Um, bottom line is that the county, so they, they did the analysis. Looking, that was the intersection that we're specifically concerned about, and, um, the county, they actually. With the traffic that they generate, they're actually going to the P M P, the looking at level of service E. Which is the counties adopted level of service, so they don't even trigger, um, uh, an impact, so therefore they're. But having said that, county also has the their six-year transportation plan. Uh, they plan to put in around the, I mean, whether they do a signal, it's reaching for.
Where at that?
At Spokane Bridge.
Yeah.
Road and Appleway. And so, what the applicant has said, and this is why the government should be on their ass yet, because they're talking to the county, and they're willing to. Pay their, their share for that, and we are even willing to look at a neutral local agreement if they move that project up. Um, in years, but right now, it's like twenty twenty-seven or twenty twenty-eight, they're proposing to do it. But the bottom line is that that was accounted for, that was addressed, and that there will be mitigations. In the, their threshold determination, they're not.
And then the other intersection of my concern is the one there at Appleway and Country Vista. That is a, already a dangerous intersection, and I think the city's got some action to go fix that turn. Uh, Country Vista and stuff, because, because people drive very forward there, uh, often. And and if that's also an intersection into that piece of property that, uh. The distribution center or whatever that is, it's coming in, I don't know where they.
It's actually, so.
They come in, right, if they come in next to that area that off of. Country Vista, and that becomes a four-way intersection.
So, interestingly, that, that, so their accesses are both east of, both. Both accesses are east of the country, just the intersection, so it's actually not going to be.
Right, we might still affect it because of the, the line, the traffic coming and going. So, yeah, that's an act of intersection, yeah, lots of dollars.
Yeah, well, and again, we'll, we'll be adding a turn bay there.
Yeah.
And we've been, that's designed.
Yeah, it's on that.
This year, this year, hopefully, we'll get it out to the, with construction next year, I think you can have construction dollars in the next year.
Okay.
So. Any other questions or comments?
So, then. I don't, the commissioners, nothing, I don't have anything to say.
Do you have any desire to, uh, to report to the city council at the next council meeting on the twenty-first? Does anyone have a desire to?
Do we have much to tell?
I, no, I don't think so, I think.
I don't have anything really to tell.
It's, we're, it's a process, well.
The personal, uh, services is going to come to the, at the meeting.
Yes, that's to be hearing, they did the workshop last, last night, and there's to be a hearing on the twenty-first, so.
Unless they want us there for that, but I don't.
Well, they've got your, now that you've ratified the findings and recommendations, um.
I don't need to, I don't think, I don't think it's. I don't think we have much to bring up for the end, so. Okay, no citizens, so no citizen comments. Return it, anybody want to give your turn?
So moved. Second.